Mute yourself. And I'm going to go ahead and get started with some of our housekeeping things. Thank you again for joining us this morning. My name is Gracie Semeninger and I am the president of Downtown Council of the Jax Chamber. I want to remind everyone that we are recording this session today and the recording will be available for our new Downtown Council podcast. If you haven't already, search the Downtown Council on your podcast provider and hit subscribe. I also want to provide you a brief overview of Downtown Council if you're new to us. So we are one of eight Chamber councils. And simply put, Downtown Council cares about the future of our city. We represent Jacksonville's business community, including major corporations, growing businesses and startups. Our goal is to connect one another so that downtown and greater Jacksonville will thrive and prosper. We also pride ourselves on keeping you informed of local business and civic issues by bringing top tier speakers to our meetings. Our meetings offer a brave space to discuss local topics and we look forward to different perspectives on what makes our city great and ways to make it better. Today's speaker is Catherine Hardwick, Vice President of Marketing for Downtown Vision, and she will be speaking about the Jax River Jams Concert Series. I'm going to briefly share a little bit about what's new to Downtown Council in 2021. So for those of you that joined us last year, we have extended the length of our morning meetings to include a breakout session for more networking and discussion, which means our meetings will end at around nine fifteen. We are also hosting Downtown Council Power Lunches with board members and chamber small business leaders to get to know one another better. And I want to thank Wendy and Jim for co-hosting our first power lunch today. We'll be incorporating quarterly in-person networking meetings and so keep a lookout for more information on a downtown walking tour scheduled sometime next month. We're starting an informal Downtown Council Fit Club meeting at the Chamber downtown and going on a run, walk or bike or whatever you feel comfortable doing along the Riverwalk. So that should be fun. That'll also be starting next month. And lastly, most importantly, we're committed to building a diverse board reflective of our community. And so we have some work to do in that area, but just know that that is a priority for the board this year and into the future. I mentioned a lot of things and we are always interested in your feedback. So if you like something, if you don't like something, if you'd like to see a specific speaker or topic, come to Downtown Council, please feel free to reach out to me or any of our board members with your feedback. If you are a Downtown Council Board Member, will you please wave to our attendees this morning? Thank you. Thank you so much for your service. At this time, I will now recognize all new members to Downtown Council. Elizabeth Greby with the Jacksonville Business Journal, Stephanie Mack with Catherine Way Collections, and John P. Miller with Miller Wealth Management. Welcome. At this time, I'm going to turn it over to our Downtown Council Small Business Leader of the Year, Mr. Jim Webb of Manifest Distilling to introduce our spotlight speaker for today. Jim, take it away.
Good morning, everybody. Today of the honor and pleasure of welcoming Dr. Wendy Northley. She is the Small Business Leader of the IT Council for 2021. And obviously she's in IT, but she got her doctorate in creating and delivering high-quality training and she now leads a team of highly qualified professionals that work with individuals and corporations to provide strategic solutions. In this role, she is driven by her desire to inspire and develop others. But she also is a firm believer in giving back to her community. She serves as the immediate past president for the Jacksonville Chamber Information Technology Council. She's also the Board Chair for the Pace Center for Girls in Clay County and she's on the Board of Directors for Synapse, Florida. She is an alumnus of Leadership Jacksonville and a longtime mentor for Take Stock and Children. Wendy also has multiple publications and has received many awards for her service and leadership. So at this time, I would like to welcome Dr. Wendy Northley, who's going to tell a little bit about herself, her business and why she was the SBLY for the IT Council of 2021. And Wendy, make sure you're on unmute.
Okay, Jim, I don't think Wendy is logged in yet, so we'll try and catch her towards the end of the meeting today. So Laura, I'm actually going to kick it over to you if that's okay to introduce our second spotlight speaker for today.
Yeah, absolutely. That works out well. Good morning, everyone. I'm Laura Phillips Edgcombe. I am Program Director for the Downtown Council. This morning, we have two different speakers in addition to our SBLY Spotlight Speaker. Both are speaking on some really cool events that are coming to Jacksonville, one of which I am very actively involved in. So I'll get to that in a minute, but before we get to that one, we're going to first, I'm going to introduce John Falconetti. He is the CEO of Drummond Press and he's a native to Jacksonville. He is a third generation running Drummond Press. He's been there since 2005, I think, if that's correct, John, this is in my notes. And he worked up, he grew up like working there like his whole life. So it's kind of neat to watch him as a true Jacksonville, Jacksonvilleian kind of, you know, moving forward in the city and also bringing really great entertainment to the city as well. John is going to be bringing us Boss of the Sauce, which I am going to let him talk to you a little bit about. It's coming in April and we are really excited and really looking forward to it. For any of you who are from Jacksonville and remember, all kids used to host a big barbecue event. This is what this reminds me of and I'm so excited. So John, I'm going to go ahead and let you let you go.
Laura, thank you so much. Thank you for that introduction and it's great to, you know, when you, when you join these Zoom calls and so forth, you've got this big spread of pictures. And I love seeing so many of my friends on here this morning. I see some smiles. I see you waving over there, Bonnie and Chris and Jackie and so many of y'all. Thank y'all so much and Kimberly. But hey, I'm so excited. I tell you, I will very briefly tell you about the genesis of this idea. So a little bit over a year ago, I tore my Achilles tendon. I can't walk. I can't drive for two or three months. We're in the middle of COVID. Trying to like, everybody on this phone, you're trying to run your business and you're really focused on culture and you're focused on your team. And I remember it was one Saturday morning, I thought, you know, I'm going to look forward to 2021 and I want to get people focused on what it's going to be like when we come out of all of this. And I started thinking our company had a couple of times we competed in these barbecue competitions and they were so much fun and we placed like all the way at the bottom last with our barbecue team. But, but we had a great time. So I started Googling and I said, well, we've got offices in Atlanta and Jacksonville and, and some other areas. And there were no more barbecue competitions in Northeast Florida and I kind of couldn't believe it, right? So it kind of, it started off, I called Daniel Davis, I called Michael Corrigan, a few buddies, and we were going to get some Weber grills in a parking lot and give away some, some ridiculous trophies. And then, many of you know me, know that I can very easily get carried away. So it went from some Weber grills in a parking lot to the first world championship qualifying barbecue competition ever to be held in Northeast Florida. And I'd love to walk you through a little bit of what we've been up to. And I'm going to attempt to share this screen. And let's see how I do. Okay. Got a little animation at the beginning. Welcome to the Boss of the Sauce. Can everybody see my screen? Yep, great. So let me tell you a little bit about the details of the Boss of the Sauce. It's a three-day festival, April 8th through the 10th. It starts, it kicks off on Thursday night with a wonderful partnership with River City Jams. And obviously I'll defer to Kate, who can give you a lot more details on that, but this partnership is fantastic and Downtown Vision is amazing. And City of Jacksonville's support on that as well is great. Now on Friday night and Laura and Amanda and Rachel's helping us, but we've got this amazing partnership with the Jax Chamber, we're going to tell you a little bit more about. But Friday night, we are going to the Jax Chamber hosted in the Pavilion, just like the annual meetings. We're going to have a tasting and it's going to be with local barbecue restaurants, craft beer and bourbon distilleries. And we're really excited about how fun that event's going to be. And then on Saturday, that's when the public amenities for the, for the competition begin. And they're really from kind of 11:30 AM to about five or six PM. But just reminding you, for these folks, they're going to start rolling in on Friday morning with RVs and campers and trailers. And they're going to be setting up shop right there in the Riverfront Plaza, the side of the former landing. And so they'll be, they'll be staying all night lighting fire, lighting their smokers and grilling and having a great time. A couple of high points, again, this is the first ever world championship barbecue competition qualifier ever in our area. It's sanctioned by the world's largest barbecue association, the Kansas City Barbecue Society. And, and again, in terms of me getting it carried away, we're also out of about a thousand competitions. We're in the top five in terms of the prize pool for dollars. So we're, we're definitely coming out with a big splash. Couple of points about the demographics and, and when I was given this presentation months ago, it was a promise of how I think this will be successful. Now that we're about three weeks out, I can tell you that we are successful because we've got a head start. Northeast Florida is one of the largest country music markets in the nation. Easily it's in the top three. Barbecue restaurants and competitions are rapidly expanding across the nation and really even the world. It's a world competition. Our friend Jim Webb can attest to this, craft beer and, and local bourbon distilleries, but distilleries in general remain very popular and are growing. And the Kansas City Barbecue Society is the most recognized and largest governing body in the barbecue competition circuit. And that helps us attract teams throughout the nation. I think earlier I mentioned, we've actually got the 2018 World Champion coming to Jacksonville to compete. We've got a team that took third in the nation last year will be coming to compete. We'll end up with about a hundred teams for this event. Special thanks, City of Jacksonville, Visit Jacksonville, of course, Jax Chamber, and of course Downtown Vision have been great partners of ours. Benefits to the community and you're all businessmen, especially when we look at, when we look at downtown, particularly excited to share this message with you. But you know, Jacksonville is going to, it will benefit from an increase in sales tax revenue, not just through the activity, but additional bed tax revenue because we've got so many folks coming in town. The Omni Hotel is serving as our host hotel and they've been great to work with. And we've all heard this a lot, but I'm a true believer in that every great city has a great downtown, right? We want to focus on downtown and I'm committed to having this event downtown. We're also supporting local businesses. We're focusing on partner with local restaurants and local breweries and local distilleries. And then the last thing is this can be a great family event. I've got an 11-year-old and seven-year-old. And oh my God, they're going to have so much fun at this event. They're going to run around like crazy. We'll have a special kid zone for them as well. Charitable benefits. We are 100% committed, absolutely guaranteed to contribute money to this community's outstanding charities. And hopefully we're, you know, we're investing in this, so it's a reoccurring event year after year and that commitment will grow. We'll embrace a process similar to the TPC Foundation where after the event, we'll engage our committee members and we'll engage the community and, and look for applications for us to support. Really special message right now is our very close alignment with the Jax Chamber. There's two things. First of all, again, Friday night is a tasting dinner. We've got some general admission tickets that are still open and, and we're actually looking at this point before we get sold out to make sure that we address any, any desire by chamber members to participate. So we can, we can get you involved in that. But one of the main reasons I'm on the call this morning is to share with you the news about the Jax Chamber Cup, presented by Miller Electric, and I'm thrilled to do this. So we've got the professional division and those are teams, probably 50 some odd professional teams that are competing for the world, one of the nation's biggest prize pool, one of the biggest cash pools. On the backyard or on the amateur side, we'll have about another 40 or 50 teams over there. And, and those are folks that, you know, work in our community, that, that they're not professional caterers, but they love barbecue. Now, any team that is in the backyard division that is representing a Jax Chamber corporate member, they're going to, their numbers, they'll still compete for the championship with the backyard division, but they'll also be sorted out and the team that has the highest scoring points in that subgroup will be awarded the Jax Chamber Cup. And this is presented by Miller Electric and Henry Brown's been not only a great chairman for y'all, but he's been a great leader for us in this initiative as well. So that, I'm expecting that that'll be a lot of fun and a reoccurring competitive competition moving forward. Please know that in terms of COVID, while our community is very fortunate and it's, we're objectively seeing a subsiding of the, of the virus, we are still very, very much leaning into appropriate COVID practices. So sanitation stations and social distancing, appropriate barriers and so forth will be enacted throughout the, throughout all of our events. And with that said, Laura, thank you so much for that kind introduction and I appreciate being with you all this morning.
Thanks, John. We also are excited to learn about this. I'm looking forward to very much, looking forward to eating some really yummy barbecue after, you know, following River Jams. I think that the two kind of flow quite nicely together. I know some of the backstories, they weren't, it wasn't all the same until it was like, wait, we're all doing this. Let's do this. So I think that the partnership that's moved forward has been very exciting. I think it's going to be, you know, we had, well, the nations was kind of like the first event whenever things kind of started getting better and now we're rolling into this. So I think it'll be a nice, it'll be wonderful for the community to be able to come together for arts, culture and to eat good food and then serve a good nonprofit or two or three or four, however many you're able to help this year. With that, I know that Wendy is actually on now, correct, Gracie? So we're going to go ahead, Jim, I'm going to let you do a quick intro for her and then let her go forward to that. And then Jim, once you're done, I'll go in and I'll introduce Kat.
All right. Well, yes. So thank you, John. That's really whetting my appetite for barbecue and I'm glad we're working together on this. But now let's get back to Dr. Wendy Northley from, she's the 2021 SBLY Small Business Leader of the Year for 2021 from the IT Council. So Wendy, here we go. And make sure you're on mute.
Yeah, I looked at that. I said, okay. All right. Thank you for having me here. Many of you I know I'm looking through, so many of you I know. It's great to see you again. A lot of you know me through, when I first moved here, I was helping FSCJ and then about six years ago, I had a family tragedy. I ended up adopting my daughters and I really needed, I was looking for something that gave me a little bit more flexibility. And so I decided to figure out what I love to do, which I got it down to about three things and decided to try and see if that was something that was, you know, I can earn a living. And I just celebrated this week, my fourth year in business. So it has been something I can sustain. So I'm very happy about that. But what we do, I have a company called Northley Integrated Solutions and what we do is we partner with both individuals and organizations. And we're not a one, we're not a, you know, one size fits all organization. We really work with our clients to assess, envision, develop and execute solutions. And we were looking at increasing productivity, improving performance and really trying to inspire a continuous focus on excellence. And we have three verticals kind of that we focus on. I'm a certified coach, among other things, and over half of my team are certified coaches. And so we do both individual and corporate coaching. And that can take the form of a lot of different things. It can be ongoing. It can be somebody that just maybe needs a refresher. We also work with our clients, especially our corporate clients, that a lot of times will help them do retreats. Because sometimes when they want to do these type of events, they don't want them in the office. And so we'll actually work with them, find the location, give us a budget and I have a really great member of my team that is really great at that. We also, our second vertical would be training and development. Some of you know that my background is IT, I have two computer science degrees, but when I became Director of IT for a global company, I found out that there was a lot of bad trainers out there. I sent my team to Chicago and so needless to say, Chicago is not cheap. I said 22 people there and you're talking about for the whole week. So you're talking about the minimum of 5,000 a person. And they came back, for lack of a better word, just as stupid as when they went. Okay. And so I had my assistant book me for the same training and just say that we had a new person on the team and I went and I was just horrified. And so I got really interested in training and, and you know, working with adults. And so I went back and got a PhD in instructional design. And with that, I've been working with a lot of my corporate clients and a lot of universities and helping them develop online training. And so that's our second vertical. And we do both in-person and virtual. And so that is something that has picked up a lot with COVID. A lot of people had to quickly switch to online and if they're going to do the investment, they may as well do it well, right? And so then our third vertical, this is kind of came about, this wasn't one of my original verticals. This came about in the last couple of years. But I worked my way from entry level position to Director of IT for a global company. And then when I got ready to switch industries, I went to higher education, still doing a lot with IT. So I was, when I moved here, I was over all five campuses for FSCJ for all their technology-related programs, which really is a lot because everything that's non-liberal arts has a technology component. And so I, I was Dean of Technology and then for about five or six months, I was interim Dean of South Campus, I mean interim, interim President of South Campus. And I really found that I obviously have a lot of business skills in addition to IT skills. And so my third vertical is business consulting. And so we do a lot with nonprofits as far as board development. I sit on several nonprofits myself and actually have started a couple with people. And we do a lot of strategic planning, helping people with budgeting. And then with my entrepreneur people, we do a lot with feasibility studies and business plans. So those are our verticals. We are a partner with our clients in the sense that if it's not us, if we're not a good fit for you, we'll let you know, but we'll help you find people. And that's why it's so important that we know what's going on and who's doing what in the city. Because we want to keep the business here if possible. And so we have no problems referring them to another business that's local and one that we can partner with and we have confidence that they're going to do and take care of our clients. And so that's pretty much us in a nutshell. And thanks for letting me be here.
Thank you so much, Wendy. What I, what I want to reiterate on this is like, I moved to Jacksonville from basically New Jersey, New York. And we are a huge town, but we are a small town too. And there's no six degrees of separation here. It's like I was reading your bio and Pace Center for Girls jumped out for me. And my friend Lawanda started Pace here in Jacksonville so long ago. And so there's so, so much intertwined connectivity here. We are like, everyone knows somebody here in town and it's, it's not to put down a saying of it's easier here, but it is so easy to do business here in Jacksonville. Once you're part of the chamber, once you get out there and you just find out that you know so many common people. But anyway, I'm going to turn it back to Laura now and keep this Zoom going. Thanks again.
Thanks, Jim, and thanks Wendy. Looking forward to seeing you at lunch today. As Gracie had mentioned, we're doing these power lunches and Wendy is going to be our first one today and I'm really excited to get some one-on-one time with her. So Wendy, I'll see you at lunch and Jim, you as well. Okay. So real quickly, before we move into the next, I'm going to remind everyone, we are recording. One, two, for those of you who haven't joined us before, the way this works is our speaker will give their wonderful presentation. And if you have any questions along the way, feel free to throw them in the chat box on the right-hand side. I'm sure some of you have questions for John and Boss of the Sauce as well, and he can answer those as well. So feel free to throw those on in. Once we, once Kat gets through with her presentation, then we will go ahead and get those questions answered for you guys. And that'll run until about nine o'clock or so. And then at nine o'clock to nine fifteen, we will move into networking sessions. If you can stay and join us, we would love that because a big part of what we miss in person is the networking. For our beautiful speakers, if you don't, if you can't say, it's okay. We understand, but of course you're always invited. To that, I'm going to go ahead and introduce Catherine Hardwick from Downtown Vision. First, before I start, I'm going to tell you all, she is literally one of my best friends and part of my hardcore tribe. So I just, yes, I love you so much and thank you for everything you do for everyone in this community and for all of us personally, you are an amazing human. So now I'm going to read your bio because if not, if I, I'll just go on forever and rant. So Catherine Hardwick is the Vice President of Marketing for Downtown Vision. Like I said, she's has about 15 years of experience and she oversees two of the four strategic pillars for Downtown Vision. The first being marketing and events, which is why she's here to talk with us today. And then also the research and information. Anytime anyone has ever seen the State of Downtown Report, that is all Kat. That is, I mean, it's her team as well, but that is, that's Kat's baby. She's got a ton of accolades and is super involved in the community, which is wonderful because what it helps us, helps her in her job, it helps her like make things better for us, if that makes sense. Their primary focus is to help, of course, improve the downtown district, which we as Downtown Council are very grateful for. And we also love DVI and partner with them to try to help as much as we can with anything that we have coming down the line. Kat sits on, she was part of Leadership Jax's class last year and she sits on the board for the Florida Theater. She carries a myriad of awards and whatnot. And so I just, like I said, I adore her. Anyway, her and her husband Brian, they travel all the time. She's always, always got those great pictures. Anyway, very well cultured, very well. First, and with that, I'm sorry, because like I said, I'm just going to keep going on, on Kat, I'm going to turn it over to you. So you can talk about the Jax River Jams, which is this amazing event that we are trying very hard to throw together. I say we, I have been tasked with coming and helping with some of the production because that's my, that's my, my life, my career. And I'm very honored to be part of that as well. So with that, Kat, I'm going to let you take this away. And like I said, guys, you have questions because I'm sure you will. Throw them in the chat box and we'll make sure they're answered at the end.
Oh my gosh, Laura, thank you so much. I don't know. I can't possibly live up to that introduction. That was, that was too sweet. So I'm also going to attempt to share my screen, so bear with me and let's see how I do. See, definitely still, you know, we've been in Zoom for, gosh, Zoom land for about a year now. And it's something you would think I would know by now. But anyways, well, I worked to get that up. I am Kat Hardwick, VP of Marketing for Downtown Vision. I've been with the organization for about 12 years now. And I see a lot of wonderful faces. So I know a lot of you already know a little bit about us and probably a lot of you have seen our CEO Jake Gordon speak in the past. But I just want to do the whole dog and pony show for everybody very quickly. But before I do that, and actually, let's see, before I do that, is there any way, I know I sent over the, the presentation. So is that something that you guys can get up to on your end?
Yeah, give me a second.
Thanks so much. But I just want to thank Laura so much and I want to thank everybody for having me here today. Following John's amazing presentation on Boss of the Sauce, it's going to be so delicious. I'm from Pennsylvania originally, so I really didn't even know what barbecue was truly until I moved to Jacksonville. And also awesome to follow Wendy as well. You are a true boss babe. Love you very, very much. So Downtown Vision, we're the Business Improvement District for Downtown Jacksonville. We're about 90-block district. And there are bids like us in most major cities and bids function to do whatever, bring whatever services are needed to their downtowns. For us, that's marketing, that's clean and safe. One of the best things we're known for are, is our ambassador program. Hopefully you guys are aware of our orange clad ambassadors. They're on streets cleaning, being a hospitality force, doing social services outreach. They're absolutely amazing angel of human beings in our downtown that help us take care of downtown. We're really getting into doing a lot of placemaking in downtown. We do events and we, as Laura mentioned, we do research. I'm definitely the data nerd in the organization. And oh my gosh, you guys are a gem for, for doing that. Thank you so much. So if we can go to the third, the third slide. Yep. So that's that. Those are our pillars of focus. The next one, please. Thanks. So as I mentioned, I'm a big data nerd. So one of the things that we've done this past year is look at a lot of geofenced data for downtown. And it happened right in time. So the, the software we use allows us to kind of take a four-year look at traffic to downtown. And what you're looking at right now is the unsurprising drop that we saw in downtown with COVID. And this runs from January of 2020 all the way through to last week. And you're seeing that the traffic, the foot traffic return a little bit. But what you saw before, the first bit of the chart there, it's a lot of those peaks. Those are the events that bring people downtown that are so, so important. And as you're getting to the end of the chart, you're starting And as you're getting to the end of the chart, you're starting to see a few more peaks as events are coming back on. So that makes us all very, very excited because we want to make sure there's a lot of there, there in downtown. We also survey our residents and employees. And unsurprisingly, events and entertainment are one of the things most commonly cited about what positively affects people's downtown experience. So it's a not, it's a no-brainer for us. It's definitely our mission to do events. This past year's been tough for everybody, but definitely tough if you're in the events business. So we're excited to, to start to bring events back. And enter Jax River Jams presented by the absolutely amazing ViStar Credit Union. We have so many partners and I'll get to them in a minute, but absolutely could not do this at all without ViStar. Huge, amazing partner for downtown in general, bringing employees back. Just saw a wonderful article with Brian Wolfberg where they're looking to maybe start having employees on a voluntary basis come back to downtown. This summer, so very excited to have them back and for everything they're doing, bringing some amazing restaurants. Laura, your, your whole team is just doing phenomenal things. So again, more there, there in downtown. And, and so we're bringing the River Jams, Jacksonville River Jams on. For, for Thursdays in April. And it was really important to us, oh, can we do the next slide? So it was really important to us to do a few things with this concert. In, in making it free for everybody and making it a multi-genre, so there is something for everybody. This really came about, probably about two years ago. A bunch of folks went on a leadership, a chamber leadership trip to Buffalo, New York. And we, while we were there, we experienced one of those Thursdays on main concerts and a lot of downtowns have those. And we thought, you know, Jacksonville deserves all of the best things. We should have a concerts like this, free concerts for everybody in downtown. So it's really just a great example of when we do leadership trips, we really do bring back best practices. So this is a prime example of, of the fruits of, of those trips. So fourth, three Thursdays in April, beginning April eighth, leading right up to Boss of the Sauce. And then it's also going to be on the riverfront Plaza or our joke is the lauding, but don't officially call it that. And, and we are also doing the, the very same thing in terms of CDC guidelines. The picture there is actually from our movies that we did in October. We did Hocus Pocus and that was our first foray into how to throw events in a post-COVID world or a COVID world. So we did the socially distanced squares. We did two event or two movie series and it allowed us to kind of play with the setup and see what we really liked in terms of. How to use this new amenity, this, this gorgeous new space that is seven acres. It's huge, you know, so how do we, how do we best program that? And so we, we learned a lot and sorry, the sun is coming right up in my face. Had a wonderful time. We had probably about a thousand people in that first movie night and we learned a lot. It allowed us to bring back an awards dinner, a gala. So we've been practicing with how to keep people safe in these events. And it makes us very confident that we're going to be able to deliver that safe, fun event experience in April. As I mentioned, there are so many partners that are making this possible. This is one of the most gigantic undertakings our organization has, has done. And we couldn't do it without incredible private support. So many businesses have come to the table and said, you know, we want these things too. So you see ViStar, the DuPont Fund and a lot of others, including Boss of the Sauce. And then also on the other end of that, we have partners, the Chamber. We have, the city has been a great partner in terms of helping us with this experience and programming all along. They were the ones drawing the socially distanced squares for us in the movie night. So they've been incredible partners to us. And then in addition, the one last partner I absolutely need to thank is the Florida Theater. Because at pro bono, they have booked all of our talent, which I'll talk about in just a second. But it's been a lot of effort on their team and we, we couldn't have done, you know, anything without them at all. So big thanks to Florida Theater. It's going to be like a great Florida Theater show outside. Excellent. So national headliners, we are opening with Chase Rice. So to John's point of, you know, the whole country demographic, we want to start off with a bang and we want to invite people downtown. And I think there's a lot of synergy there between a country concert and the barbecue fest. So it's going to be wonderful following that newfound glory. If you guys are pop punk fans, a lot of people are excited about that. Quad City DJs is Jacksonville bands. We're, we're excited to have them come back home. If you guys knew, come and ride the train, they're hip hop act. And then Sugar Ray, which I honestly wasn't sure about. I was like, are people going to actually like Sugar Ray? Oh my gosh, everybody is talking about Sugar Ray and so excited to come. So we're, we're very happy to bring this lineup to downtown. Another important thing is making sure we're supporting local. So we have picked and in our event producer Hannah Ferguson has done an amazing job. So where Florida Theater was doing the national headliner lineup, Hannah. Who is a former DVI employee that we brought back on an event consultant basis. She's doing so much for this event with Laura, but she also booked four incredible local openers that we are paying to be there. We didn't ask anyone to do any of this for free. We have Firewater Tent Revival, again, kind of a blue grassy country feel. Universal Green is a band that plays downtown a lot. They're great friends of ours. LPT bringing in a little Latin flair, getting really excited about that huge community favorite. And then Honey Hounds, also a local Jacksonville band. Another part that's really important to us is to bring a lot of the community back downtown and let them take advantage of, of this opportunity to get in front of people after this past year. So a big partnership with ViStar as well. ViStar Community Corner is bringing small, small businesses and artists to the event. So there's a wonderful list and this is not even the final list. I think it's missing folks like Mocha and WJCT. But we are going to have about 20 different organizations out each week. Some of them will rotate through, some of them will be out every single week. So it's going to change and be a lot of fun. And that is going to be right outside of the grassy lawn footprint. We're closing the street as well. So we're going to make it a huge, big event and there, there's going to be a socially distanced market component as well. And then I, I was speaking with another group recently about this event and I neglected to mention food trucks. And the first question I got was, what are we going to eat? So I didn't want to make that mistake again. We are going to have about eight food trucks out each night. And in addition, we're working with the fabulous Jim Webb to make sure that we have local craft beer and local spirits, including Manifest represented. So there will be a bar and food trucks on site. That's always, you know, some of the favorite things that people love to experience at these events. So we're bringing that all back. And then also, if you want to come early mingle and then go eat dinner downtown, we love that too. We do hope that there is an impact on our local businesses from this concert series. So if you guys do want to get involved, that's another question I always get is like, this is fantastic, but you know, like how, how do I help? Or how does this affect me? We do need volunteers. So I have information up on the screen. You can just go to jaxriverjams.com if you want to sign up. And definitely there is a VIP tent. So if you were, if I were you, I would ask to volunteer there because that's going to be a lot of fun. So real quick, I just wanted the opportunity to, to talk a little bit about the other things we're doing. I know in the office, it's an all hands on deck type project, Jax River Jams. But that doesn't mean everything else is stopped. So we're still staying super busy, doing a lot more for downtown. We have had a lot of focus recently on the river and we're really excited about that. The concert, of course, will be right on our gorgeous river. Our team, Eric Miller, who I believe might be on this call, led, led this amazing art installation on the North Bank Riverwalk. I hope you guys have seen it and it was a great partnership with artist David. And I am going to butcher his last name, so I'm not going to say it, but it is up there. And then we also had recently a gala, which was another event to activate the South Bank Riverwalk. Where we had about 300 people out, four nodes of activity along the way. And then we did things for the community as well at that gala. So it wasn't just for the VIPs. We commissioned the River Taxi to go back and forth and everyone could get on it free. We had free hot dogs and treats for folks and then we had a free photo booth for everybody. So not only were we doing a gala to raise money for more placemaking, but we were doing placemaking as a part of the gala for the community at large. So these are some of the things that we're doing to try to make downtown better and just do our mission day by day. Marketing as well, there's a lot of goodness, as I say, coming soon. We just launched in 2020, right with the pandemic hitting, we launched our dtjacks.com website. Have this amazing events calendar, which almost immediately went blank. But now events are coming back, so we have that. The Chambers site lived downtown Jax, we've been partners with since the beginning. So we're working right now to give that a little refresh. And, and not only work to recruit people downtown, but give them the information once they get here on, on what to do and how to make it a great living experience downtown. And then our team has just produced some amazing new merchandise that will be up on our website soon. So that's something we're getting into as well, just to build community pride and have products that are representative of our downtown that hopefully people are going to buy and enjoy and, and, and help us, you know, share the word that downtown is great and beautiful and something to be super proud of. So downtown is growing. I, I just, I know a lot of you might have seen in the news that we are looking to expand the boundaries where we operate. So I didn't want to not mention that today. Right now we're a 50, I'm sorry, 90 block district. We're about a half square mile. So we are working with our board of directors and then, and the DIA to expand those boundaries out. Where areas are becoming more dense, where we're seeing more residents, so that we can provide additional services. And another thing you'll see on that map is that it's going to allow us to actually provide services to the entire Riverwalk. Again, very important to us. The other great thing about this, if, if we're able to indeed expand our boundaries. It will basically double our ambassador team. That, that's where a lot of the new contributing funds will go to. And we think that's just the best value that we can deliver in making downtown better. Other ways to get involved, we have a river, I'm sorry, we have a cleanup. That's a picture of our first river cleanup. We recently did one in Lavilla. Our next one is in the Cathedral District coming up April 10th. So doing a concert on the eighth, we're going to roll over, do a cleanup and on the 10th and then go to Boss of the Sauce. So a big thank you to our partners, DIA, the Downtown Dwellers and 904 Happy Hour on, on these quarterly cleanups. There will be information on our site. It's not up yet. I believe it might be up on the Downtown Dwellers site though. So if you're interested in getting involved, we tend to have somewhere between 70 and 100 people come out. It's a, it's a nice morning. And then the last one, I think a lot of you might already be familiar with our DT Jax gift card. But we have almost 30 businesses and you know, if you're looking for a gift, we would love for you to consider the gift card as a way to gift local and let, give people the experience of downtown amazing restaurants more coming soon. And experiences as well that this all covers. So I think that might be it and I might've, I don't think I talked quite as fast as Jake Gordon, but I feel like I talked really, really fast there. So if you have any questions at all, please let me know.
You did wonderful. You definitely talked faster than you normally do, so I appreciate it all. We're doing great on time actually, and we do have quite a few questions. I'm actually, before I get to the event questions, there's a couple of questions about downtown and I think that they're important. I want to make sure that we get to them. So I'm going to ask a few of those first, Kat, if you don't mind. And then we'll circle back to the event. So I have a question and it's, it's cute. It says, hey Kat, silly question, but can you please define placemaking? When you talk about placemaking, what does that mean?
It's kind of nebulous, right? It's a, it's a term of art that basically means, look, we have these outside public spaces. And days of old, it might've just been kind of a barren sidewalk with maybe a bush here or there. And what we want to do is really make that an inviting space for people. And so there's this whole idea of doing things that are lighter, quicker and cheaper. To create a sense of place and make people want to linger outside. So a perfect example of that is our patio on Hogan Street. If you guys have been to the Happy Grilled Cheese Food Truck, you'll see our patio where there's some, you know, it's a lot, a big sidewalk. So there's some AstroTurf down, it's fenced off to create like this great little dining area. Our ambassador team brings out tables and chairs every day during lunchtime. And then we've just installed these incredible new Tivoli lights to brighten the space up. So that's a prime example of placemaking. It, it's, it's a lot of fun and it really just makes you feel good about a place when you're walking through it and hopefully you stop and enjoy it.
Robert, I hope that answered your question. It makes total sense. You know, it's funny Kat, like whenever y'all first, when y'all did that, I remember that was a gala, the prestige from the gala five years ago now, four years, five years ago now. And I remember at the time, whenever y'all talked about that, it was like, what is, you're going to build a, like a seating thing in a parking spot? But once it was done, it was the most amazing. And to your point, like the, where it is on Hogan, it's like in between like really tall buildings and it's kind of darker in that area. And kind of feels desolate, but as soon as y'all put in some greenery and some flowers and a place to sit, it, it is great. So people stop there to eat lunch all the time. So you know, it's, it's kind of fun. Robert, maybe we can plan a little lunch date and we can go over there and go, and go utilize it. Okay, I have a question. That was a funny question. We'll go to that. Mark Aston asked, where's the Cathedral District?
Great question. So there are actually eight different districts in downtown and we're working with the DIA right now to brand them. So hopefully in the future, it'll be more of like, oh, this is the Brooklyn District or this is the Cathedral District. So the Cathedral District is the area where we have five historic cathedrals and churches. And so it covers the area where the Basilica is, St. John's Episcopal. It, it's basically just east of the central core, between the central core and the sports and entertainment district where the stadium and the arena are.
And there's, there's housing and residential area there as well, right?
There is, there is housing. There's more coming online. There's a lot of senior housing, but we also have condos over there. We have the new shipping container apartments. Vescor is putting up a property and there are a few others going up. And a lot of people who do live there say it's like the most residential area of our downtown. And that's something that they're really trying to capitalize on is making that, that family friendly residential. There are single family homes there, which is unusual almost to the other areas of downtown.
Okay. Kimberly asked, what's the best way to communicate questionable things we see downtown?
So it depends on what those questionable things are. There is a number for our ambassadors on our website. And so if it's something like.
What do you do? If someone's soliciting you, what do you do?
So if somebody's soliciting you, the, the first thing to do is say, no, I'm sorry. Do not, you know, give to panhandlers. There are a lot of opportunities for folks who need services downtown, including the urban rest stop. So don't feel obligated to give them anything. And then call JSO non-emergency. And it might sound a little crazy to do that. But what that does basically is tell JSO that there has been an incident of panhandling or something, some kind of nuisance behavior. They're going to ask you your name. They're going to ask you to describe the person, what they're wearing, other features. And they're going to ask exactly where it happened. So you know, a business, if you can identify where this happened. And what that does is put a pin on the map. And then JSO has limited, you know, they, they just are limited by the number of people that work for them. And so they have to kind of triage where they're going to have the most officers. And the more pins on the map, the more air, an area gets their attention. So we've, we've had a lot of great discussions with them and they're a great partner with us. And they have said absolutely call. It may seem like a overkill, but do it because it lets them know there is an issue and it lets them provide more resources to the downtown area. So that's a non-emergency, it's 6300500. I know that by heart. I, I do call when I get panhandled myself. So definitely go ahead and do that if you are, because that is the number one thing that people cite that, that is a problem downtown from those resident and employee surveys. And obviously there, there is a issue of not feeling safe and it is pretty much directly tied into this nuisance behavior.
Let's see, next, next, next. Um, let's see, next, next, next. Yeah, there's so many things. Okay, so actually, Anne Marie wants to know if the slides can be shared and the information about DVI. Anne Marie, I'm just gonna connect you with Kat, and y'all can kind of, because I know that it, because especially for Anne Marie, like with your role and community involvement, I'm just gonna kind of connect the two of y'all, and we'll go from there. So let's get to, let's see, I'm going through my questions. Let's get to the event. It looks like those are kind of the ones for downtown. We're gonna start, there's so many different ones. Okay, here's what we're gonna start with. Okay, so we are, so we're gonna real quickly jump over to Boss of the Sauce, Kat, if you don't mind. John, someone asked how they can buy a ticket for the Friday night Jack's Chamber BBQ dinner. We put the answer in the chat box, but just to clarify, John, you want to tell us how, how we come to your
Absolutely. Laura, thank you very much. So there's an email address in the chat box. So to reserve tickets for the Friday night tasting at the, at the Jack's Chamber, the email is andrew.harrow@drummond.com. Simply send an email, and then you'll pay for the tickets once you arrive to the event on that Friday night. Saturday, general admission is free to the public, and we're gonna, we're gonna have a lot of people showing up. So please come out, and again, it's family friendly. There are a limited number of sponsorship packages left, and those packages do have some VIP access still available. So if you're interested in any of that, please email me directly. Not only, you can get me at jf@drummond.com, but also there's a lot of information. I apologize for not sharing this earlier. But go to our website. It's www.bossofthesaucebbq.com. And a lot of information there. And thank you again for letting me join you this morning.
Thanks, John. And then if anyone has questions and wants to send them our way, and we can send them to John if you don't happen to get to him, if you didn't grab his email. Just, we will make sure, no matter what, your questions are answered on, on these events, because they're exciting. Okay. And some of these questions actually are gonna fall towards Boss of the Sauce as well, but I'll let you answer them, because it's all, it's all kind of relative. The question is parking. So parking for these events in general, is there gonna be parking in the old landing lot? Is there gonna be parking on the surface lots? Are you working with the parking garages? Kind of what's going on for parking?
Yeah, so we are working on some opportunities, but to be honest, we are going to treat this like an Art Walk. So you guys have been to Art Walk in the past. There is, it's, it's a downtown kind of situation. So, you know, if you want to be comfortable and be in a garage, you can go to parkdtjacks.com and look at a list of garages and pricing. But, you know, we recommend you drive around, find a meter you like. Meters are free after six. So bring a few, actually, no, I'm sorry. I think the DIA changed it. They're free after five now. So it's free to park on the street, and then, you know, it might be a block or two to walk, but it's gonna be beautiful nights. I'm, I'm sure the weather is gonna cooperate with us. So definitely come on out, and you may have to pay a little bit to park if you want to park in the garage, but street parking is free.
Okay, perfect. And just to reiterate, there's more parking downtown than there is at Disney World. True fact. Just saying. Let's talk about, we have a question. Someone wants to know if they can still be part of that Community Corner, if there's a way to get in on that side.
It's unlikely. We are kind of limited by space, but if y'all want to send me an email, I'll see if I can do anything. So probably not, but let me see what I can do.
And keeping in mind that there's events that'll happen in the future, right? So if it's something you want to be involved in, maybe they make it to a list. Okay. That sounds good. I have a question, and I already know the answer to this. Anne Marie wants to know, I assume the scooters will be rolling?
Yes, you'll notice that was missing from my presentation, because it's not something that we did ourselves. But yes, the scooters will be rolling. It's just been one of those super exciting things to see rolled out. Laura mentioned I travel a lot, and I've been to so many other downtowns that have scooters, and I'm like, why the heck don't we have them? There are times when there are nuisance. But I think it's important to remember that the scooters aren't doing anything wrong. It's the people on the scooter sometimes that might, you know, run red lights. So we're working with the DIA as well right now on an educational campaign on like how to ride a scooter responsibly, because that is the thing we need to do now. You know, but just obviously treat it like bikes and don't run red lights. And the good thing is it is going to slow traffic down through downtown. People aren't gonna drive hopefully forty miles an hour down our thirty mile an hour roads. So, you know, we're, we're learning, we're growing. It's a great amenity. It's something that people really have a fun time doing. And I have a first floor office in the Ed Ball Building, and I see people scoot by every day. People are loving them.
And too, that's what the scooters will be running. They won't be running within the event footprint, though. Let's be clear. Kat mentioned there will be road closures. There will be quite a few road closures, but and the scooters won't be within the event footprint, though. Right?
I mean, they'd have to smuggle one in.
Yeah, so I was like, hopefully not. Okay, so we have some questions. We kind of answered the parking one, but so one of the big questions, and I know that this is one that we, from the get-go inception of this, as this grew, had to address, but you know, what are we allowing for capacity, and do we think we're gonna have to turn people away?
We hope not. So the capacity, it is a seven acre area, and we are gonna be mindful of social distancing. We want to allow people to do that. So that puts us with a capacity of about five to six thousand people per show. And Laura mentioned there are street closures as well. So I think there are gonna be a lot of folks who are gonna try to get that grassy area to sit, bring their camp chairs, their blankets, whatever they want, and kind of have their own little area. But the, the independent drive will be closed as well. So there's plenty of room to spread out and mingle. We really hope we don't have to turn anyone away at all. It has been a discussion. But worst case scenario, there are other really cool areas on Laura Street, especially on Hogan Street, where the Urban Food Court is, that people can also enjoy, listen to the music, be close enough to hear it. But, you know, if they don't get in the footprint, there'll be hopefully areas where they can listen and enjoy as well.
Agreed. It's kind of like Jazz Fest. If you're not right there, it's okay. You can still, you can still jam out. So, okay, we'll come back. Is that the one? Oh, what, what time do things start? What time, like, what's, what's the timeline? What's going on?
I forgot one of the most amazing So gates open at five. The headliner goes, I'm sorry, the opener goes on at six, and the headliner goes on around seven thirty. So we need time to transition and clean the, the stage between bands, very like COVID appropriate. So it, it come at five, and hopefully between five and six, we'll have everybody in there to mingle, enjoy. It's like an hour happy hour. Have some great beer and manifest while you're there. And then the concert, you know, we'll have those amazing headliners at six, starting at six, and then everything should be wrapped up by nine o'clock.
And that's the same for all four concerts, yes? And to that with the parking thing, one of the things I know that, that part of the discussion was, is this kind of like, if you work downtown, don't move your car. Leave your car in your parking garage and walk. Walking is good. I learned a fun fact. I'm part of this American Heart Association campaign, ten thousand steps. That's what it takes to keep your heart healthy every day. So if you work downtown, just walk, walk over. It'll be great. Bring your tennis shoes, come home. Okay, so as far as like main event questions, I think that that is all. But I do have one question. I think it's important that I think that, that we could talk about highlighting the work that's done in the Jacksonville Park on Main, because that's, that was a, that's a new fun thing. The DVI just finished. If you could just chat real quickly about what happened there.
That park has had a lot of, of different lives to it. And, you know, the hope is that that is a parcel that is going to be developed in the future. So you know, there's been discussion about a dog park and all the stuff that might require some infrastructure, and I definitely am glad it didn't go in that direction, so that it is a parcel that somebody can develop, hopefully in the near future. So what we did is, again, part of that place making effort, to give that place a great feel. The city has done an incredible job bringing more greenery in, like really nice planters. There's already some beautiful mosaic art in there. And then what we've done is, is basically add lighting and movable tables and chairs that are out during lunch. We have an ambassador presence for that hospitality component. And then I know that it's, it's a space now that it's been beautified. It, it looks beautiful when you walk by. And because of that, a lot of folks with the Cathedral District have been very excited to have events there. So that's kind of the, the best case scenario is we, we do this wonderful place making, and then it starts attracting folks, and it gets activated. And as you, you know, it's on a main corridor going through downtown. So we want to show off, you know, how beautiful this park is. And so hopefully we have, we've done a little bit to have a, a big impact.
And it's really nice. It's very nice. Okay, so as far as questions go, I think we're gonna cut, because we're at time, and we're really big on time. So we're gonna, we're gonna end up moving over to breakouts. I do want to say, Kat, thank you so much from the bottom of my heart for coming out and talking about this today. I know you don't always love being the center of attention, but you're great at what you do, and we, we appreciate all that Downtown Vision's doing for us. And John, thank you as well, and Wendy, thank you as well. It was a lot of fun. If you guys want to stay on, we're gonna move to breakouts, and then, and then we'll have a great day. So I'm gonna let y'all, Gracie.
We are out of time this morning. So I just want to thank you so much for being a part of our meeting today. As you may know, we meet on the first and third Friday of every month via Zoom. And so our next meeting actually falls on Good Friday of Easter weekend, and so we've decided to cancel that meeting. And so our next meeting will be the third Friday of April, which is April sixteenth at eight AM, and more details to come on the speaker for that meeting. But hope you'll be able to join us. Our website is downtowncouncil.org, so feel free to look us up and seek additional information there. And also, don't forget to subscribe to our podcast, which is new to us. Other than that, that's all I have. So hope you have an incredible day and weekend. And for those of you that are running the gate, run fast, enjoy the beautiful weather, and stay safe. Thank you.